All right, we're live. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders of Get Oiling Greg and Amanda Kilwain. Hey, guys.
Morning, everybody.
We're thrilled to have you here today. We also have Julie, Jessica, and Colin here from our team. Hello.
Good morning, everyone.
Club superheroes. All right. So where are you in the world? Let us know in the comments. We're excited to have you here today. Today, we are talking about search. This is going to be a little different from a previous training that we did do. I will be talking about that training a little bit. So if you want to go into greater depth on how you can get hands on in our system, putting these strategies into place, we did do an additional training. So I'll make sure that we have that linked in the description for the replay. But hello, welcome. We're so excited to have you here today. If you don't know what any of this means, and you're brand new, welcome. We are Get Oiling. We are the premier solution for you to run your young living business. And we serve brand partners all over the world, and we're just so thrilled that you decided to spend some of your time here with us today. I see we've got Albuquerque, Minnesota, Canada. I know here on the call, we've got North Dakota. We've got British Columbia, right? You're in B C, Colin. Julie's in Florida. And I am in New York. So welcome. We are thrilled to have you. So today, we're talking about search engine optimization. And I guess I'm kind of curious, for those of you who've decided to get started here and join us today, is this something that you've ever really, you know, gotten into learning before? Or something maybe you've wanted to learn for some time? Or is this brand new to you? This is a completely new sort of idea that I can position myself to get found on myself to get found on search engines? Do let us know. Always curious what that looks like for you. Fabulous. All right. So trying to come back and get grounded in technology. Lynn, you are at the right place and the right time. We're excited to have you here today. All right. So today I've got some slides for you. So we're going to go ahead and turn off video to preserve quality there on the recording. And and then, of course, we're going to get into all of this. Do make sure, by the way, you guys, that if you have questions, that you add those to the Q and A so that we don't miss anything as you are asking those questions. We do have a lot of activity in the chat typically on these sessions. We do these live every Thursday at noon Eastern. They're a lot of fun. But if if you ask something and it's not in the Q and A, we might miss you. So. All right. So today, we're going to talk about simplifying this idea of SEO so that you can get expert results without spending a fortune or a ton of time on tech. This is something that if you've been around marketing for any period of time, you you may know that this is kind of a gargantuan topic. And there's some interesting reasons why we're going to get into those. I'm going to share with you a fun resource, a good listen that I hope you might go and explore today. One of my favorite podcasts and creators actually wrote about this recently or wrote spoke about this recently. It's podcast. So I want to talk about that today as well. So here's what we're going to do first. We're going to talk about how search engines work. And then we're going to talk about what those search engines are looking for from you. We'll talk about one mistake that you can avoid that'll save you a lot of time and a lot of money. And then we'll get your SEO game plan in place so that you know how you can be at the top of the heap when your perfect customer is out there on the web searching for topics that you love to talk about. Then, of course, we'll get into live help and Q and A. That is, after all, why we created this call in the first place. It's an opportunity to work together. So if you came here with questions, if you need help with something that you're working on or with getting started, or whatever it might be, we're here for you, whether it has to do with the day's topic or not. So go ahead and add those questions to the Q and A so that we can help you out while we're here on the call. And if you're watching this as a replay and you'd like to be on one of these live calls in the future, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession and get basically get on the list to be the first to know about everything that we're offering and sharing. Sometimes we give away free stuff. We interview interesting people who are doing cool things in the young living community. So make sure that you are on that list. And if you want help on a one on one, like you want one on one help on a live call, if I can get my words in order today. If you could go to getoiling.com/webstatereview, you sign up there, you let us know what it is that you would like help with, and then you can pick a date. A Thursday in the future, where on one of these calls, like we're on here today, we can have some dedicated space at the end of that call to review your website, to help you with that one thing that you feel like you're not quite getting right, or to help you get a plan in place to have your website, your system running the way that you want it to. There is no wrong question to ask. Go ahead and go to getoiling.com/webstatereview and sign up for a slot. And we can work together on one of these calls. And by the way, if you can't be here live, which I know a lot of folks can't be here, whether you're maybe on the other side of the world, it's the middle of the night, or maybe you're here in North America. And you're working while we're here. You can also submit those requests ahead of time, and we can review those and you can watch the review as a recording later on. All right. So a question for you guys. Let me know in the chat. Did you use a search engine today? Have you gone in and Googled something? Or, you know, if not Google, have you gone to a search engine or your browser, which is equipped with a search engine, and typed in something that you wanted to know? Not going to ask what, because that can get a little wild. Yes, we got a lot of yeses. This is something that, you know, in the last, we'll say 20 years or so, has become very, very normal for us every day thing, multiple, multiple times a day thing, right? We search for things. Does anybody remember what life was like before search engines? Like how you found answers to questions and like, you know, businesses that had the thing that you needed? Anybody remember the the library? Yes. What else? Yeah. So let's talk about the origins of search here for a second, because this really is kind of a miracle of a phenomenon that was not planned. It was something that that came about as an extension of something that we already had in place, which was, if this looks familiar, the Yellow Pages, right? This is sort of where search started for a business, right? Obviously, the the library is the other answer for information generally, right? But back in the day, put on my glasses here, back in the day, businesses would pay, and in some cases, these things still exist. It's kind of interesting to find them. Have any of you guys seen Yellow Pages like recently in the year 2022? So businesses would pay directories, like the Yellow Pages, to list their business information. And then Yahoo came along in the very early 2000s, late 90s, and they started creating a directory as well. Now, I think a lot of us thought of Yahoo as a search engine. When you think about Yahoo, sometimes you think search engine, but Yahoo was actually created to be a directory. It was really, it's really interesting when you think about it. I actually want to talk to you guys here in a second about a podcast episode from Seth Godin, who I believe to be just an oracle of modern marketing. He was an early VP at Yahoo. And and so he he kind of tells this story about sort of the what the environment was at the time and how this little company called Google came onto the scene and absolutely changed the face of search, right? So but Yahoo was really built to be a thing that kept you on the page, right? They want you to explore and stay on Yahoo because they're showing ads for businesses that are paying to get that visibility, right? Well, Google changed the game because they don't want, Google doesn't want you to stay on Google. Google wants you to go out into the world and click on these things and and to, you know, and to to get the thing you wanted, because you're going to come back again. And you're going to search for another thing that you want to find, and they're going to deliver that to you as well. So Google really kind of helped to create this model. And today, we are going to be talking a fair amount about Google and how you rank on Google. And and I do want to go ahead and put this out here. Obviously, Google is not the only search engine. In fact, I am certainly someone, I think most people here could agree, if you got an opinion on this, that we need more diversity in search. So we need, you know, Bing and DuckDuckGo and Okozia and different search engines to become more popular. But the fact is, where we're talking about how we operate our business to get found, Google really is the, I mean, it's the elephant in the room. It's their rules. Everyone runs their SEO strategy based on what Google does or does not do. And so that is what we're going to be talking about here today. But I do want to, of course, help you guys understand a broader strategy that will help you no matter what you personally prefer and no matter what the direction is that we all go. Because if we all decide that, hey, you know what, we don't want them to own our information, and we want to be using other search engines, and everybody decides that, how you operate will no longer be a dictated by Google thing, right? Because we want to be logically found by other search engines as well, right? But today, we are going to talk about Google specifically, just because if, you know, if you're not ranking on Google, you're missing out on an enormous opportunity for your people to find you. No matter how you personally feel about Google, a lot of your people are using it, right? Same thing about social media. Conversation for another day. But anyway, search changed with the advent of of Google. And and now there is a, there's an incentive, right? For 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 you to get to the front page of Google so that you are basically competing with this real estate, which is now taken up in in great part by ads, right? So there's less space for organic. That would be just, you know, they find you because they search, not because you're paying to be up at the top. So it's it's a very competitive space. You obviously can pay to show up on the front page of Google when people search for certain things. It's certainly something that we do as a business. That may not be something that you choose to do. And today, we're going to be talking about how you can show up in that organic way, where people search and you're actually one of the first results that show up. Not as an ad. Okay. So this is the podcast I'm talking about. It's interesting. We've been talking about as a team SEO for the last week or so. And and I was walking through the park yesterday and listening to my podcast, and this one came on from Seth Godin, and it's fairly recent. It's called The Thing About Search. He goes, it's about, you know, 20, 25 minutes, and it is absolutely fascinating. This is somebody who was kind of there on the ground floor at the time. He's absolutely someone who also believes that we should have diversity in search. And and that, you know, Google shouldn't necessarily be like the one and only. So very fascinating look, very interesting sort of way to look at the philosophy of search that I think that everyone should listen to if you care about getting found and about, you know, employing SEO strategies generally. Definitely check this out. All right. So let's make sense of SEO here today. Let's demystify this thing, because it is often made mystical by people who have some degree of expertise in it, when in fact, this really can be something that's very logical, that is simple and easy to follow, and you really don't have to be super duper techie to make this work for you. All right. So for those of you who don't know, let's go ahead and clear this out of the way. SEO stands for search engine optimization. And basically, all this is you optimizing the pages, the blog post, the content on your website so that search engines are more likely to bump you up to the top of the heap when someone searches for a term that you want to be known for, right? Something you are talking about on your website, on your blog post, things like that. Okay? Now, the higher you are in search, the more likely you are to be found by great leads, right? Because I mean, unless you are just really digging for something hyper, hyper, hyper specific, most of us are going to click the links that show up on the first page of search, right? Sometimes we dig a little deeper because we're like, okay, I'm curious. I want to go a little further. But most people go off of what's on that first page, right? So there is an advantage, a really great advantage to showing up on that first page, if you can, or in the first two pages, so that those people who are actively looking for answers to the questions that they have can find you and see you as a provider of answers to those questions. All right. So if you take nothing else away from this call today, take this. This strategy, SEO, search engine optimization for your website, for your content, it is a long game. This is not something that if you put the work in today, tomorrow, this week, you're going to necessarily see a result next week, right? It's not like social media where you make a post, that one person was paying attention, you get in the DMs, you got an opportunity, you close a deal. SEO is a long game opportunity for you to own your space, your real estate in a niche that belongs to you. It is a big opportunity, but if you play it right, you can get residual lead flow and pay $0 in advertising, meaning people find you because they were looking for an answer to a question. The search engine's like, yep, this is the person with the answers. They go, they check out what you have to offer. They opt in to the things that you are offering for free. They get in your funnel. They become your customer eventually, right? That's the goal. So with SEO, this is something you should absolutely expect to, you know, to be a long game. When I talk to clients about creating content and content is, you will talk about that in a second, is something that you need for search engine optimization in our space. Anyway, I mean, there's definitely ways to rank your homepage or this page or that page, but we're not getting into that today. This is in the context of your young living business and how you want to be found. Basically, you you just want to make sure that you are, what I say to clients is that you you should have started creating content like six months ago, like the time to have started creating content was six months ago, because it takes a while for the the search engines to actually start bumping your content up and moving you up that ladder toward the top, right? So it's something to start now, start early, know that you could always adjust over time. But do look at this as a long term strategy. All right. So before we get into the the strategy, and yes, the the power of search is the podcast by Seth Godin, Misha, and the podcast is called Akimbo, A K I M B O. Definitely look them up. All right. So before we get into the strategies here, because I do want to share very specific strategies with you today. Let's look at the big picture. So first, SEO is not an exact science. So anybody who tells you that they know everything about everything about SEO, if they don't work for Google, they aren't that much of an expert, because no one knows everything about this stuff. It's deliberately opaque because it's their product, right? It is. It is Google's proprietary product. The way that they determine what is best to put in front of someone who searches for a term is their proprietary product. They're not going to tell them what that is, right? The Young Living doesn't publish every recipe for every one of their blends, do they? Of course not. That's their proprietary product. So nobody knows 100% with 100% accuracy exactly how the inner functions of search engines work, in particular, the bigger ones, right, that we want to rank on. So unless the information that you're reading or that's being shared with you is publicly disclosed by Google, it's technically theory. Now, interestingly, there are absolutely publications in the SEO space that conduct studies, right, that are, you know, scientific studies where they're talking about this variable, that variable, and testing it against ranking on Google. Now, you can find some really interesting insights, and I am going to share some of those things that are sort of more proven tested as opposed to Google said this is true. But the fact is, is that Google changes the way it operates all the time, and they have no obligation to disclose those inner workings to us, right? So just understand that if you don't, if you feel like this is big and you don't know all of it, that's how everyone feels, and that's okay, right? And if a trick worked for you before, or, you know, you're learning from someone on the internet that's talking about, oh, I know a way to get XYZ result. If it worked before, it's not guaranteed to keep working for the same reasons above. But if you understand the big picture, the right strategy is intuitive, easy to follow, and works for any search engine. And if one day we all get smart and decide we're going to be using alternate search engines and not just Google, and they lose, you know, the market share that they have, then you can still rank effectively on those other search engines without trying to shape your entire strategy around one company, right? All right. So big picture first, Google is a for profit company, right? Its product is their search traffic, their ability to get eyeballs, that's us who are searching in front of advertisements for companies, right? And so people go to Google to find what they're looking for. And if they find it easily, they're going to keep coming back. And so companies pay Google to advertise to those people. That is how Google makes a lot, a lot, a lot of its money, right? We keep showing back up to search for the answers that we're looking for. They keep delivering consistently. And so we are going to keep coming back. And that is a promise to advertisers that they're going to profit, because we're going to see those ads, click them, and then potentially go be their customers, right? So Google's got an incentive to deliver really high quality, relevant answers so that people keep coming back, and they can keep putting those ads in front of them. Okay? Now, Google has sets of standards that it follows to decide what content is relevant, useful, trustworthy, and authoritative, authoritative. Okay? It has standards. Again, it publishes some of it, not all of it, right? It says some things are a thing, others are theory, right? So it's, again, it's opaque. But look, at the heart of their product is these standards, right? How they go about deciding who ranks at the top. And the way that they go about delivering their product, right? This this actualized set of standards applied to content on the web so as to decide who ranks number one, number two, number three, number four, and so on, when someone searches for something. This is the combination of an algorithm, which is machine, right? It's they got little bots that crawl websites and search for terms, and they pull things and some things make your ranking go up, other things make it go down. But they also have thousands and thousands of employees who also go and crawl and look at websites, right? So it's not just machines that do this. It is also people. So if you want your content to appear at the top of their list of trusted and relevant answers, you just got to create high quality content that serves their users. And there are some other tricks, but this is the most important thing. If you want more people to like what you have to say, then create more stuff people like, right? If you want more people to listen, make more noise. If you want them to keep listening, make sure that you're giving them what they're looking for. Once you've made that noise and caught their attention, right? So create high quality content. That's the first thing. And that high quality content you're going to create, where, yes, as far as we're concerned here today, are blog posts on your good oiling site. And really, ideally, I can't stress this enough, YouTube videos that you also embed on your good oiling site and you link, and we'll talk about that here in just a little bit. All right. Back to the big picture. Search engine algorithms, they read code, not platforms. Okay? So with your, you know, if you're on a tract well, get oiling WordPress, Wix, Squarespace, they don't care what you're using. There is like, you know, WordPress doesn't own SEO, because, you know, if if there, you know, if there's only one platform that worked for ranking content in search engines, then we would all just use that one, and there would be no need for anything else. We would not exist as a company, right? So this is this this one mistake that you can make that, if you make it, it can cost you a ton of headache and a ton of money. You know, is is to think that, oh, well, I also need this other thing. You don't, right? If you're following the right strategies and and you get the big picture, you're making good content, and you're following the right steps to to create the authority and trust and credibility around your brand and what you're creating. SEO works on literally any platform the same way. Okay, really, really important thing here. All right. So let's sum up our big picture. This is our sort of painting the great big picture of SEO and what it means for us. This is Google's business, right? And it's their rules. And they only publish some of those rules. So we are fundamentally going to be a little bit in the dark as to what exactly one must do to rank on the first page. But they are looking for relevant, trustworthy content that serves people who are searching their platform. So if we are publishing relevant, trustworthy content on a consistent basis over time, we can build authority with search. Remembering, this is a long game. Okay? All right. So now let's talk about what they're looking for from you. How do we play their game? What are their rules that we know and that we can operate within? And what are some best practices? Okay? And of course, we'll talk about what we can do to make your content more attractive to those algorithms and to those sets of rules that allow them to bump you up in the results to the front page. All right. So let's talk about what search engines look for. First, authority. Second is relevance, and third is trust. That's it. Think about it like this, right? Their whole business model, like we talked about in the big picture, whole business model is based on bringing lots and lots and lots of eyeballs to a page where they're looking for an answer, and they can deliver a targeted ad that a business is paying for. If they aren't giving results that are authoritative, relevant to what that person is looking for, and coming from a trustworthy source, Google would not have a business, right? If they just took whoever's or whatever's stuff that had this, the right keyword, and gave it to you when you searched for something, and it wasn't actually contextually relevant to what you were looking for, you wouldn't go back. You'd go somewhere else. You go to the library, you'd go back to the Yellow Pages, right? So these are really the pillars of of what they're looking for. And we'll break these down into separate pieces. So we can really talk about what this means for your business. All right. So authority is first your content. Obviously, content is going to be the the main means by which you are found online, right? It's what you're saying on your website. It's your blog post content. It's your YouTube videos. It's the stuff, right? Because when someone searches for something, they're clicking on something, they're getting your content, right? So content is critical. So we want to use keywords in your content that your ideal person is entering into Google. Now, in our previous training on SEO, we did talk a little bit about using like a keyword research tool. There's no one answer, no one best one, because again, there's no one company or entity that is not named Google that that knows for 100% certain exactly what works all the time, right? And and I mean, to be fair, because it's humans and an algorithm, I don't think Google knows exactly what works all the time either, right? So so be sure to use keywords in your content that your person would be searching, that would be Googling. So get in, get into their head, get into their shoes, think about what they're looking for. And you're going to use those keywords in headers on your page, in the title of your pages or your blog posts in the URL, which happens for blog posts automatically, and making sure that there is a mention of that keyword in, you know, the first 100 words, right? Because if, you know, if somebody is searching for homemade dog shampoo recipe, if homemade dog shampoo recipe doesn't show up in the first 100 words of that article, like that article could be about anything, right? It could, it could, it could talk about a million things in the in the very first paragraph, right? But it better talk about that one thing that they're searching for. All right. So one study, and this is, this is an interesting thing. This is new to me. One study found that front page content on Google averages about 1,400 words. So your blog posts would benefit from some length, right? Because the depth of coverage of a topic shown, same study, has shown to increase search authority. So think about it like this. If you are, you know, the Harvard Business Review, you're probably not publishing 500 word articles or essays, right? They're probably several thousand words. And Harvard Business Review would rank incredibly high in terms of authority on Google, right? I mean, that would also be the case if you were, you know, just think back to when you were in in high school or college, and you are, you're doing a research paper, and you're citing credible sources. It's the hierarchy of credible sources applies to Google as well, right? If they are a major news source, if you are a dot edu of some kind, right? You're going to be automatically seen as authoritative and credible, right? So start thinking about how you can position yourself as similarly credible and authoritative and operate in a sort of a similar way if you want to have Google see you as being similarly authoritative. All right. Also, critical is that the content is original. It's yours, and it's not a replica of content from elsewhere on your site. This can kind of bump things down. So if you've copied and pasted, maybe if you've gotten content from a content provider in the young living space, make it your own, use it as a jumping off point. Multimedia actually plays a really big role. And if you want to skip ahead and get to the top, the front page of Google more quickly, have your blog posts embedded with your YouTube videos. So create a YouTube video along the same lines of the blog posts that you've created, embed that on your website. Google owns YouTube, right? And it loves to display videos high up in the search results. Take advantage of that. All right. So another thing that you can do is use alternate text, use keywords in your alternate text. So in your images, if you add an image to your blog, maybe if you're writing a blog about cold brew coffee recipe or something like that, and you have an image of of some coffee, then you would put in the alternate text for the image, cold brew coffee, right? That adds a key word to the image that helps as well, because Google also has image search. Then, of course, you want to keep your content fresh. So go back to your older content. You can change the publication date and add add new content to your blog posts, to your articles. Maybe you wrote a best of something for 2021. You got to refresh that for 2022. Make sure that you're going in and refreshing those things. Gwen, alt text is not just keywords. Alt text is simply if you click, if you're in the Get Oiling Editor anywhere, and you've you've put an image in, if you click the image, a a menu pops up. And and one of those has like a little text icon. If you click that, you can type in alternate text. And what that's for, say, like an email, for instance, is if you send an image via email, but somebody doesn't have their mail set up to download all the images, it'll show whatever that alt text is. And that alt text is also read by the bots that the search engines have that scrape your website. They're just, they're looking to see that what you're talking about is actually the thing that someone is searching for, and that that article is really and truly contextually about that thing, right? Okay, so continuing on authority, authority is huge. Links. So next to obviously content being the thing that ranks on the search engine, your blog post, your pages, things like that, links to and from your site play an enormous role in your ability to get seen and get elevated by in your ability to get seen and get elevated by search engines. All right. So these are enormous. Search, SEO is so, so driven by links, specifically something called backlinks. Now what backlinks are is essentially another website linking to your website. Links to you from your blog showing up on another website, right? So they show when you have backlinks, it shows that other places on the web find you credible too. So if everybody's talking about this one article about cold brew coffee, then Google's going to say, you know what? This is probably the one that I want to show to the person that's searching for cold brew coffee right now. Right? So we want to have links from your content elsewhere on the web. So make it a goal to have links to your site, publish on websites with high authority in your niche. Okay? And then cite and link off to, and this is, it goes both ways, right? If you aren't linking off to other sites with, with, with similar or higher credibility in your own space, what kind of credibility do you have, right? Well cited work, right? Again, thinking back to, you know, writing term papers in college and in high school, you needed to cite your work where you were, or cite your, your, your sources when you were producing work. Similarly, it benefits you to cite other authoritative sources when you are creating content. Don't forget that like most, and I should have said this in the beginning in search, when we're talking about the origins of search, most of these search platforms, in fact, most of these, most of the, you know, the, the social media platforms and all of this, they, they all originated on Ivy League campuses, right? These were, these were high level projects of graduate students, right? They think like academics, their rules are fundamentally built on academic premises. So just kind of put that, just stick that in your head and file that away. Cause if you think like, you know, someone professorial, right? Or somebody who's been a grad student who would be like, you know, citing credible sources on a piece of work they wrote, know that like, that's kind of the logic that's being applied here. Okay? Continuing with authority, interaction. Of course, if nobody's paying attention to what it is that you're doing, why would they want to tell someone to go pay attention to what you're doing, right? So page load time, like how long it takes for your page to load definitely plays a role here. And we've actually got a new system update that speeds that up in a big way. And then you can make sure that your content is mobile friendly. This is automatically going to apply to your blog post, but do make sure on your page content that you've got those set up for mobile friendliness as well. The bots, the, you know, sort of things that, that power the algorithms, they track the time a user spends on your website. So if they click a link from the search or from wherever, they see how long someone stays on your page. Do they jump right back off? Are they like, no, this isn't, you know, this isn't what I was looking for, or maybe a page didn't load. That's where the bounce rate comes in. But then they also see, well, you know, how many pages did they actually click through on your website? Right? How much time did they spend there? That tells them how valuable your content might be to a particular user. And then of course, direct visits play a big role. So if people are actually going in and typing your url.com or whatever into their browser, Google knows this, it, this plays a role. And then organic click through rate from search. This is, you know, if you did show up in search results, if your meta description was enough for them to say, oh yeah, I think that's the right one. I want to click it. That absolutely plays a role and whether or not you get bumped up further in search. And then again, interaction, pretty straightforward. If there are comments, a good number of them on your blog post, that's going to tell the bots and even the humans that are evaluating the authority of a website or its content, that this is in fact, something that people like and are paying attention to. All right. Next is relevance. First relevance of content. This is pretty straightforward. In addition to just using your keywords like cold brew coffee, you would, you want to use related words and phrases like, you know, like, I don't know, something about some coffee beans or, you know, single origin coffee beans or French press coffee maker or whatever, right? So use related words and phrases on page and in context. So you're not just saying cold brew coffee, cold brew coffee, cold brew coffee, like all through the blog post. You're talking about other things. It's also relevant to the person who's searching for this cold brew coffee recipe, right? So a, a way that we could explain this is if you're, if you have a website that's talking a lot about travel, it makes sense for you to use a phrase like the best miles reward credit card, right? But if you have, you know, a blog or, you know, have a website where you're talking about animals and wellness, you know, making a blog post about changing brake pads is, well, that's, that's not really going to work well for you, right? That's not relevant. And what they want to see is that what you're offering as a whole is something that is on the whole relevant to what that person who is searching is looking for. Because if they're not just going off of the word or the phrase that someone's typing in. And, you know, this kind of goes back to a little bit of what we touched on in the beginning about sort of the problematic nature of, of Google and big data. They know so much about us based on what, what we search and the, the location data that we have, places we go, things, you know, things we click, all of that kind of stuff, what we buy. So, so they really can deliver a highly personalized result. And so while this is kind of weird, it's kind of creepy. It's kind of big brother. They're going to know how to deliver your perfect person to you. If that, because they know that that person is searching for other things that you're also talking about, even though in that particular instance, they went into Google and they searched for cold brew coffee. Maybe they also know that you are, you know, like that that person is, is, is searching for paleo recipes. And so because you are someone who has paleo recipes and also has this blog post about cold brew coffee, they want to put that person first for you, right? Or they, they want to put that person in front of you and bump you up in the search results for that reason. Okay? Now, links are important to relevance as well. Like I said, links are critical to your SEO. So links to and from websites that feature similar topics and keywords. That's again, going to really point to the fact that you are a relevant source for what this person is searching for. And then links again to and from authority sites. Authority sites are always going to be important. If it's a dot edu, if it's a major news source, if it is a news source that's listed on Google News, those are all going to be really powerful places for you to try to get your content linked so that it increases your authority and relevance in search. And then finally, interaction here, they are looking for relevance wise, the time that's spent on your website, number of pages per session and the bounce rate, whether or not people are leaving and how quickly. All right. Now the final piece here is trust. So trust seems pretty straightforward, but there are a couple of like fine tooth comb things that we can do to increase our trust authority so that we can be better featured in search. First is to be above board, right? If you were Googling a company, because you were looking for, I don't know, maybe you wanted to get your brake pads changed and you're, and you're Googling, you know, change brake pads Duluth. And, and you type that in, if you go to that website and there's no contact information, there's no privacy policy, there's no terms and conditions, there's no fine print. Maybe you go to a who is search and you look up that domain and it doesn't show who it is. You're not going to want to go like meet that person or give them your money, right? Or give them your information even. So be above board as a brand. So what we, what you can do to this end, if you have your own URL, which you should, having it private does have negative impacts. So consider getting a business address, right? And have that be listed with get oiling. You have a business phone number. Have that contact information listed. If you don't want to provide your private phone number. So keeping the domain registration private does negatively impact your SEO. You can make sure your who is, and that is your domain registration information is on your website as well. So your contact information would be the same, same email address, same phone number, maybe same address, that kind of thing. Displays somewhere on your website. If you registered your domain for more than a year, that also is something that directly benefits your trust ranking with Google so that you can appear higher in search. And then this, the fine print stuff, a lot of us and even a lot of our clients don't really care so much about this fine print stuff, but Google does. Having a privacy notice, terms of service, things like this on your site that linked in the footer of your website is going to help increase that trust factor for you. All right. That, another piece here for trust, the final piece for trust is to be your brand. Brand yourself. So if you have a business name that you're branding or your personal name that you're branding, just lean into it. So lean into it with a domain name, email address, right? But then have an about page. We're actually talking about who are we? What do we do? Google looks at this. They care about this. Having active social media accounts that are associated with the same brand, your name or the name of your business that are linked to your site and vice versa. These play a role in whether or not Google wants to feature you. Okay? And your brand name and URL, if they could ever, if you could ever get them linked from authority sites, again, think like the dot edu is the big news sites, things like that. If you can get, and this is a PR thing, if you can get your brand name and your URL linked from elsewhere, that's, that's a big authoritative site. That's going to do a lot for you. Quick question here from Gwen, is there a pre-written option for terms of service and privacy? No, maybe. So I would, there's definitely some templates that you can Google. But depending, I mean, the, the best advice is to consult an attorney and to have them write something for your business. But there definitely are some templates out there that you can find for free. And then of course, you can just copy and paste that into a page on your site. You don't have to make it pretty. Just make sure that it's there. All right. So let's talk about your SEO game plan. What do we actually do with all of this? Cause this is a lot, right? It's pretty, pretty simple. And Greg just put a link here in, in the chat within a term speed.com is an inexpensive way to get templates for your legal docs. Thanks for sharing that. All right. So your SEO game plan, first, we're going to set ourselves up for success to first brand yourself with a domain name. And this is something that you can set up with get oiling. You could reach out to support at good oiling.com. Let us know what the name is that you prefer and we can set you up with that. And we can also complimentary add an SSL secure socket layer certificate to your website. This is a thing that impacts your trust ranking with Google. Okay? Add an SSL certificate. Again, if you're setting your domain up with us, we can set that up for you. You can link your social accounts to your site and vice versa. It really is helpful, even if you're not active on all the major social networks. It is valuable for you to go ahead and set up and brand those and link them and vice versa. Okay? And you know, if you have SSL on your website, if you go to your website and look up in the top of your browser bar, if it has like a lock on it, like a closed lock, then that's a secure site, right? But definitely reach out if you want some help with that. All right. So link your social accounts. This is actually, it's a bigger deal than you would think, and it is something that does impact your SEO. And then this is pretty critical, guys. Get into the mind of your ideal client and create a list of keywords and phrases that matter to them so that you can start leading conversations around those terms in your content and on your site. Okay? And then create yourself a custom homepage, branding you, branding yourself and make sure that your site is easy to navigate. So no broken links. Make sure if somebody clicks something, it goes somewhere and so on. Now content is king. If you want to rank online and the search engines content is how you show your credibility, it is ultimately how you build trust and how you turn people into subscribers and customers. So start creating regular content that's relevant to your ideal client. And the way I recommend doing this is to write a blog post. We now know 1,400 words is, is a sweet spot. You could do less, you could do more. And then embed a YouTube video on that blog post. And then make sure that on your YouTube channel in the description for that video, you also link back to the blog post, create a little circle there, right? We've got the YouTube video on the blog post. We've got the blog post linked on the YouTube video. Use keywords in the titles of your video and your blog post. So those are those keywords. That's what are they searching for? And then keep your content fresh and updated, right? There's, there's definitely a lot of, there's a lot of content in the young living space in particular that is seasonal, that is, oh, hey, it's Mother's Day. What are you going to do for Mother's Day, right? But it, that kind of content isn't evergreen. Right? So evergreen content is something that people could Google and they could find it anytime and it's going to be relevant to them. Now, it's not to say, don't write about Mother's Day, but have a blog post about Mother's Day. And make it something that you could refresh and republish next Mother's Day. That's still relevant, maybe update it, keep the YouTube video the same. So it's something that stays relevant and people can keep coming back to year over year. So refresh those things. And then use your paragraph settings. And again, this is in our previous training on SEO. When you are in the editor in the blog or on your pages, you can use the paragraph settings to do header one, header two, header three, and so on. You absolutely need to be using header one with keywords at the very least. And then it is beneficial to have sub headers elsewhere on the page with contextually relevant terms and a repeat of keywords. And then add keywords to that alt text on your images. Finally, we want to be a backlink boss. Backlinks are the main driver of SEO. It is really how Google is able to quickly and easily see that you are a respected source. Who knows what they're talking about? So make sure that you're linking out to authority websites. So you're showing, hey, I'm playing in the same pool as these guys, right? And then get networked and look for ways to get interviewed by news sites so that they could link to your content. Right? Just do this in your local community, right? Be writing posts about the things you're passionate about. And then reach out to, you know, your local news station and say, you know, hey, I helped this type of person get this kind of benefit. I would love to do a special, if you guys do that kind of thing, maybe we could do, you know, a, a quick thing. And I could show them a recipe or a tip or something like that, that can help them get a benefit. Morning shows on, on local news networks are always looking for that kind of content. So, so just be, be looking for those opportunities to get that visibility from places that are high trust, high credibility. And then always, always, always be looking for new ways to get your content linked from more and better authority sites. Okay. Now we're going to get into some Q and A website reviews. And if we do need to do any show and tell, we can certainly do that. I know this is an absolutely packed topic and a pretty, pretty packed call too. So let's get into our Q and A. And, and then yeah, if anybody would like to see anything, then we could certainly show and share that as well. All right, Cornelia, I have blog content, so I can use it and just add SEO, right? Yes. So for your existing blog content, you can optimize it. So go back to what you've already written and have a plan for keywords. Use a keyword research tool and come up with what you see as being the highest value keywords that your ideal person is searching for and, and, and what is contextual to the content that you created. And then modify the name of the blog post. The link would be modified there as well. And then make sure that you're adding those header sections and, and that kind of thing for sure. You can optimize existing content. And that's kind of the beautiful thing about this is if all of this was just a lot for you today, if you could just start writing a blog post a week, starting this week, you are on the right track. You can always go and get better at this stuff and go back and modify. One of the most successful approaches you can take in content marketing for SEO is to create like a best of list. And that's something that the biggest names in this, in this business do. Every single year, they go back to the same one that they wrote 10 years ago and they update it for this year. Every single year they update it. So everything is editable, right? Your website is editable. You can't, you can't edit the emails that you sent, right? Can't do that. But your content, your website, all of this that we're talking about here today, it's editable, modifiable. And it's good because this is a very fluid sort of set of criteria that we're trying to match ourselves up against where SEO is concerned. Okay. Okay. You're saying if I post my Zoom class at many places, Facebook, LinkedIn, people will be more likely to be found. Yeah. So it does help to, to share information about your class. I wouldn't, don't post the Zoom link. It needs to be a link to your website, right? But if there are links, a lot of links to your website and pages on your website, on Facebook, LinkedIn, social media does count, right? It's not going to count quite as much as you, you know, being interviewed by your local news station. But it does help, right? It is a repeat of those links of yours being out there in the world. So, so maybe your, your website.com forward slash events and promoting that heavily on social media so that that link is repeated and in a bunch of different places. And because your events page on your good oiling site is, is always going to be refreshed based on whatever your most recent event is. If you're using the events manager, then that link always stays relevant. So yeah, you could totally do that. It's not going to show tonight's class, right? Because this is a long-term strategy, but it's, it's a good idea. Okay. So alt text is Jackie, when you click the image, like when you're making a blog post, click the image and the, the little, little menu pops up. Alt text is one of the options and you can just type something in there. So one of the best ways I can explain this is some of us like to use an image of ourselves, maybe with like a cute little cursive, our name as, as a signature, right? So in your email. So in your email signature, well, the best practice for that is to use your name as alt text for that image. Because not everybody has images showing up in their, in their emails, right? Maybe they have their data, you know, on low mode or something like that. But then, you know, if you didn't have that alt text, it would, it would just look like you didn't sign the email, right? So that's what the alt text does, but it's something that the bots read, right? Not everybody's going to see it. Most people are going to never know that it's there. But it just takes a couple of seconds and it can help to boost your results. Okay, Jenny says, I have SSL, but I've noticed if I click a link to my site from my phone, it says the site isn't secure. Notice that on some of my friends' sites too. Greg, do you have any idea why that might happen?
I'd probably have to look into that. I don't know a lot. And I mean, I know that there's like a very, like a handful of really old devices and computers that are probably more than 10 years old that don't support like the most recent, you know, the encryption system and standard that they have now. And so there's like an increasing number of websites generally that have that. But I mean, unless the, if the phone is relatively new, it should work. But if you can, Jenny, if you can send in some examples to support, that'd be awesome. If, if somebody is willing to share a screenshot or something like that.
All right, Linda has asked if we could do a quick review. We do have a few minutes. Let's do it. All right, Linda, I'm bringing you out to chat. Let's talk about your website. Hi.
Hi.
I'd like this. All right. Tell me more.
Um, can you hear me?
Okay, I can. Yeah.
I don't know. I just had a friend help me because I was too confused. And so this is our final product at the moment.
Ooh, I like where you're going with this. Okay, so, um, all right, nobody's. What are, what's the main thing that you want people to do when they land here? Like what's the action that you want them to take?
Um, I'll say the action is living well made simple. Okay. So I want them to understand that it doesn't have to be complicated. So when you get down, when you start to scroll down, you're going, okay, I want to, I want to know more. Simple lifestyle changes. And then you set the plan. So, okay, so maybe I'll call her or contact her to create a plan.
Okay. Okay, so here's what I would recommend. Up here at the top, I love this color, this image here. I think you have, it looks like you have the dark header set up here. And of course you have your.
We couldn't figure out how to do a white one.
Oh yeah, it's, it's actually, it's, it's pretty simple. Here, let me, you know, open up a new.
We wanted to do it white. Well, actually we wanted to be able to use my, my logo. Uh huh. But it doesn't look good on the black. We couldn't figure out how to do the white. So.
Yeah, here, um, I'll, I'll show you real quick. It's very simple. So the reason why, the reason why I wanted to, to bring this up is this area right here is prime real estate for you to grab someone's attention and get them to take action right now. And so what, what you want them to do is to sign up to get a free thing, hop on a call with you, you know, take advantage of something, you want to grab their information here. And, and if they see, oh, hey, I think I really like what this person has to say. Like we want to be able to be in touch with them. Otherwise they're just somebody who passed by and that's a missed opportunity, right? So this, I love the colors in this logo. I would encourage you to use maybe the colorful one up here and use a light header. And then use this section of the webpage, this above the fold section to say wellness doesn't need to be complicated. Most people have given up. I make healthy uncomplicated. So you can redefine what it means to act your age. Oh my gosh, I want this right here to be as big as this, right? Like this, this needs to be shouted. This is so good. And then what we want to do is just pop a button there that says, let's talk, let's create your plan or something like that. Because that way, if that person is like, most people make a split decision. Like when they land on a page, they're going to decide whether or not something is for them. And there's nothing about this right here that's going to make somebody go, oh, let me do this, right? But if it says, I make healthy uncomplicated. So you can redefine what it means to act your age. Let's, let's create your plan. Now they want to know, oh, wait, what's the plan? And they're either going to be like, yes, I want that and click the button. Or they're going to be like, tell me more about the plan. And that's why they scroll, right? What you want to do right here is really elevate this language, put a button here and give them an opportunity to take an action right when they land on the page. Because this is just, it's the most important space on your site. So let's go over and I want to show you how you can change that header. So you can use that other color. What is the? Here we go. It's this life spark one. Okay. So under settings, it's just right here, header and menu, they're both set to dark. We can change those to light. And then when we view your site, of course, we are going to need to change this guy because he's not going to show up correctly. Cause he's white there. See? But if we can take this guy and actually here, let me, I'm going to save that image to downloads and see if I can actually just do this for you real quick. But yeah, it's, it's, it's just right there in the, in the page settings.
Okay. The other thing was, I couldn't figure out how to make those options bigger.
Uh, which ones? Which options?
In the, what do you call it? The menu bar?
Okay.
The words, I think they should have been bigger.
Okay. These guys up here.
Yeah. Don't you think they should be bigger?
I mean, you, you could certainly do that. But I mean, people do have the ability to adjust on their browser.
Okay.
The size of their font. But there, there is a way to, on your site, actually set up your fonts to where you can default to larger sized fonts if you wanted to. And that's down here. But yeah, what, what I would do is keep this beautiful vibrant logo up here and then really elevate this, this language here. Give them, give them a clear call to action that says.
Make that to the top, pull that to the top.
Correct. Yeah. I would remove this logo because you've already got a logo up here that says the same thing. And, and this opportunity here is for you to let them know what's in it for them.
Gotcha.
Right? This is like, you're here for a reason. Don't go anywhere. I've got you. This is what you need. And your logo doesn't tell them that, but what you wrote right beneath it absolutely does and very well.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So, but yeah.
I work on the wording quite a bit, so.
It's, and it's clear that you have, it's good. So, so yeah, I would just make that adjustment and then be thinking about like, you know, we did a sales page training on our attract well channel last week. And your homepage is kind of doing something similar. It's like a, hey, like here's who I am, here's what I can do for you. But it's you having that conversation with them without them being in front of you. So you know, the first thing that they want to know is why do I want to listen to this person? Like why is, like what's in this for me? Because this is reading, reading is work to our, our goldfish brain. So why, like, why would I want to keep scrolling? So you tell them why right here. And then if it's compelling enough, maybe they found you from another place and they already know that you're someone credible that they want to know about, then they could actually click and say, I want that thing that you're offering. So we put that there. And then beyond that, when they scroll, basically what's happening is you tell them, you know, hey, I help you redefine what it means to act your age. Let's get started with that by, you know, creating a plan, click the button, right? And if they're like, you know what, I kind of want to know a little more before I do, I take action. That's what's happening here. You're like, okay, well, let's talk about that a little more. What does this mean? And then what are our options? How can, how can we work together? Here's, you know, some interesting, you know, something about me, which is why you should listen to me. And then here's what some of my testimonials are, like people who have, who've actually worked with me. So you, you've done an excellent job in sort of filling out the rest of the page with that conversation. This is really the main thing that I would change though. Just, just swapping those words around.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming out. Okay, couple more questions before we go and thanks, thanks you guys for being on today. Lynn, I'm not entirely sure if there was a question there. All right, Kathy, I can reach all the good oiling subscriptions to other vendors through my phone. However, I work mostly on computer and would like to access their contact from the computer. Don't see a way to access their contact from the good oiling back office only the phone. So the other vendors that you work with, you would want to go through their websites. And then the way that you connect that to your good oiling site is through whatever the resource bundles are that they provide you. So if it's for workspace, you're signing into a workspace, simple grace collective, you're signing it simple grace and so on. So if you're using the attract well app, you can have your dashboard and all of the vaults that you are signed up for, including those from our providers inside of that one app. Okay. What's the difference between good railing and attract well? If we aren't focused so much on oils, would be better to use attract well. So if you have a young living business and whether that young living business is 100% of your business or 25% of your business, if you want to, if you, if you ever see yourself providing resources to a team, if you want to see yourself duplicating at some point in the future, it would be advantageous to have get oilings so that you can share with your brand partners. Now you can have attract well and have, you know, a young living business and share, you know, your resources with your people. But if you plan on leading a team, you should be using what you will eventually be recommending to your teammates. So that's kind of, that's sort of where I draw it. I mean, we're the same company, like we're happy to have you wherever it's the same stuff. We are very young living, completely young living with get oiling and attract well is, you know, the same features, but geared more toward coaches. It's really, it's kind of up to you. There's a way to pull it off. But if your goal at any stage in your business is to help to duplicate brand partners, I would stick with get oiling because you're going to get all the same benefits that you would have if you had moved to attract well. But it's a matter of personal preference. Okay. There seems to be vendor content that I can easily find on your phone. Okay. Yeah. So Kathy, it kind of depends on, so not all content providers have a good oiling vault. For instance, like grow workspace is not, you would need to sign into their site to get those things. So, so yeah, that, that content that you have received from them and downloaded to your, to, to your good oiling system via resource bundles, those you would access through the good oiling back office, right? Your resource bundles that you get from them, but any content that they have, you're going to get through their website, which may be a good oiling website, like simple grace, for instance, where they have a vault. But, but yeah, generally speaking, you're going to want to go to that content provider's website. And we do have those listed on our good oiling site as well. Oof, there's so much. So, so, so very many comments. Okay. Hey, Camelia, just shoot me an email. I'm Ashley at good oiling.com. All right. I think this is, yeah, basic is okay for blogging. I'm trying to make sure that we don't miss any of you guys. We don't have these questions in the Q and A. All right. So thank you guys for being here today. Want to respect your time and, and really encourage you to go write a blog post today. So get that done and, and then make a commitment to start showing up and, and creating posts on an ongoing basis and just endeavor to be someone that other people want to read, right? Other people want to watch and start sharing things that your ideal person really wants to hear and read and see. And over time, you are going to build a following. This does work. There are tricks, sure, but tricks have a short shelf life, right? You don't need to have a separate webpage somewhere else, homepage somewhere else, blog somewhere else. You can do all of this on our platform. You can do all of this on another platform. The, the gist is though, be a credible source. Who is there talking about something that's relevant to your ideal person and keep it on track with that person? Be true to that, deliver, over deliver, right? And be consistent and always seek to elevate where you are being talked about so that more people can find you and you can grow and make a bigger impact. All right, you guys, so excited to see you implement what you learned today. We look forward to carrying on this conversation further perhaps in our Facebook group. It's facebook.com forward slash good oiling online. We will see you guys next week, same time, same place. Have a good week. Bye.